I don't suppose, I'm going to hope that you did, but if you didn't we'll just do it a different way. You got an instruction that you would need your mobile phones. Did anybody get that instruction to say you need your mobile phones to be able to do the quiz? Have you all got a mobile phone? Yeah, and I know normally you're told to put them away, but if you have a mobile phone, I'd like you to get them out. Because I'm going to do a quiz based on your mobile phone. If you've not got a mobile phone on you, or if you've not got a mobile phone with you, would you like to team up with your buddy there? Has anybody else not got a mobile phone on them? You can't get onto it. Because I'd like you to do the Kahoot app, please. Because the quiz is on the Kahoot app. I did get the Tech Week people to say that you would need the Kahoot, but it's obviously not been relayed down. Because I just thought it would nice if we could actually do something on your phones today and see how you can use your phones to get information and do quizzes on your phones that are helpful to you in your next career choices. Yes darling?
Shall we use the app or they want to?
It's entirely up to you. Whether you go on the website or you go onto the app, but you need to put in the 4679063 PIN. And so if you're sharing, there'll be 12, won't they? Can't you get onto yours either? No? Do you want to buddy up with you? Buddy up here? So there'll be 11 people I should have registered on that number and then we can do the quiz. I'll do a little bit of an introduction as well as to who we are once you've got everything sorted, once we've got up to number 11. So you're all whiz kids. It took me ages to do this. Absolute whiz kids.
They're on it.
Yeah, you're on it. Just me and, me just took ages. I even had to play this game on my own to make sure it worked. So hopefully it should be okay. Got seven. Got four more to get logged in. So we've got Daniella, James and Mer, ArcticDia52. It's a bit special. Is it pronounced Zainab or Zinab? Excuse my ignorance. How is it pronounced? Zinab? Yeah. Darcy, Olivia, Will and Sophia. Sorry, everybody always says to me, "You call Cheryl or Cheryl." Yeah, I'm called Cheryl. Yeah. So we've got three more to log in. Thanks Thea. Harvey, ElatedDoc74. Oh, I'll be looking forward to see what scores you get.
Somebody's struggling, is it?
Are you struggling?
No, it's just coming over and it's getting around you.
Oh, right, okay. Right, are you going to try again? Are you going to buddy up with somebody?
I can still play though.
You can still play?
Yeah.
Okay, are you going to play along?
There's one there.
But you, yeah. Okey dokey, you've just not come up on the screen. Okay. Oh, you're ElatedDog, sorry. So who is it who hasn't managed to log in? Has everybody logged in? Yep, okay. Oh, 11, Charlie, well done. Just took a bit of time, a bit like me, it's a bit slower today. Right, introductions. I'm Cheryl Sedgwick and I am the Employer Liaison and Partnership Development Lead at Hull Training and Adult Education, which is part of Hull City Council. This is my colleague.
Carol.
And... And what we do is, we deliver apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeship training and adult training to people who want to upskill as well. So we're going to do a quiz all about apprenticeships today. I'm going to give you some information. And if you need absolutely anything, fire those questions back. Because what we're going to do is focus obviously on what we deliver, but if you're looking at any other area, we can help and support you with those as well. Okay, just to give you some information. So who would like to get going with the quiz? Everybody? You ready? Shall I press the start button? So they start off a little bit easy and will get progressively harder as we go on. So introduction to Hull Training and Adult Education. Keep that name in mind. HDAE stands for what? Hull Training and Education, Hull Training and Adult Education. Well done. Wow, eight of you got it right. You've been given a clue, hadn't you? Say it on the board, say it on your leaflets. So yes sir, HDAE stands for Hull Training and Adult Education. So we're part of Hull City Council, but our actual, what we deliver is Hull Training and Adult Education. Okay, shall we see who got top of the leaderboard at the moment? It tells you who's fastest. So who was fastest was Olivia, well done. Where's Olivia? Brilliant. Not far behind, James and Mer, well done. So we'll see those costs, those change all the way through. And whoever gets the highest score will get a prize. Something to aim for. Okay, let's get the next question. True or false, Hull Training and Adult Education are a training provider? Well done. Brilliant listeners, aren't they? I'm really impressed. Didn't all get it right yesterday. It was 50/50 on that one. So yeah, that is, we are a training provider. So we are the provider of training rather than a college. So just slightly different, but we are still providing, we do additional training, English, maths, all the things that a college would do, but we do it as a provider. So just a different contract. Let's see who got that first now. Oh, ElatedDog. Well done, you. By a considerable amount, can I just say? Yeah? Let's see if you're as quick on the next question. Right, true or false, to do an apprenticeship you need a training provider and a job with the company? True or false? You're getting quick at these, aren't you? It is true, well done those four. Who were those four that put true? Well done, ElatedDog, well done. Well done. Yes, it is true. To do an apprenticeship, you have to have an employer. You can't do one without the other. So what we do as a training provider is we have a team of people who help you to source your employer. So we work with employers to say what their need is and then what we do is we advertise the vacancies so that you can apply for them and then we help and support you to match you to those company interviews. So yes, to do an apprenticeship, you have to have an employer. Can't do an apprenticeship without one. Does that make sense? Yeah? Shall we see who won? That bit? Oh, ElatedDog, you're doing well. But actually Daniella's on fire because she's had three questions right in a row. Well done Daniella. Where's Daniella? Well done. Right, next question. This is a quiz question. How much of the job training should an apprentice do as a minimum? 10%, 20%, 15% or 25%? He is getting quick at doing these answers. Make one more person to come in. Wow, four of you, 20%. And seven of you thought 25. Well, you weren't far wrong because actually, nine times out of 10, you do do 25%. But the minimum you can do is 20%, which is part of your day release when you come for your actual theory base that we teach you and train you on. The rest of it is done by the company. But also that 20% is actually done inside the company as well. So you're actually learning on the job and anything that you're learning on the job that's new to you, which is pretty much all of it, you can actually log as part of your training as part of that 20% as well. Does that make sense? So if you're doing an apprenticeship, you have to have an employer, but within that employment, you've got to have a training provider and be allowed to do, if you're working five days a week, what equals one day a week as pure training and upskilling of your skills to do that role. Yeah? Shall we see who won that bit? Let's see if ElatedDog's still top dog. Oh, James and Mer, is that you two? No, is that you two at the back? They're pipping you. By a lot as well, well done. That was a timed thing. You did. Well done. I might have to get two Badger Sweets out, mightn't I? It's good job I got two. You're all right. You don't have to share. Okay, let's get to the next question then. Oh, doesn't that work? Quiz. What are the benefits of doing an apprenticeship? You take home a monthly minimum of £689. You gain real life experience for a minimum of a year. Has progression options including going to university or all of the above? Waiting for one answer to come through. Whoa. So seven of you gain experience work a minimum for a year. You're not wrong, you're right. But actually, it's all of those things. So not only do you earn while you learn, and that's a minimum of £689 a week at the moment because that's what the government minimum wage for an apprentice is, real life experiences and working and apprenticeships can be any level. So you can do a Level 2, a Level 3, a Level 4, which is a foundation degree, and then on to your Level 5, 6 and 7, which is your apprenticeship degrees. So there's nothing stopping you earning while you're learning but actually doing an apprenticeship, which happens to be a degree if that's what your ambition is to do. Yeah, it's all of the above. Shall we see who's still winning? Do you think it's going to be James and Mer or do you think it's going to be ElatedDog? Oh, James and Mer really on fire. Look at that. Five correct answers in a row. Oh, do you think it's because they're together? Maybe, maybe. Okay, let's get to the next one. We're all doing very well though. Very quiet. Is it true or false that behaviours in an apprenticeship are as important as skills? True or false? You're all right. Well done. It is absolutely true. Because what you, what happens in an apprenticeship is, part of it is your skills, part of it your behaviours and part of it is your knowledge. We call them KSBs, Knowledge, Skills, Behaviours. And what you're doing as you're doing an apprenticeship is, what you wouldn't do just in a classroom, is you're learning the behaviours of the career that you're going into. So you learn the language of the company and the behaviours of the company to be able to make sure that you're serving the people that you need to serve and produce things for. So it is, it's really important that you have the right behaviours. It's a bit like being in school, isn't it? If you don't behave, you're not going to get the good stuff, are you? Same thing with an apprenticeship. And one of the things that you look at later on in your apprenticeship towards the end is making sure that you've logged those behaviours and how they help you to make sure that you've got that good career. Yeah? Shall we see who's winning? Oh, it's still James and Mer, but Harvey's creeping up there now. Where's Harvey? Well done. Creeping up there. But James and Mer have got streak of six. Going to take some beating, I think, these two. Are you ready for the next question? How many apprentices do Hull City Council commit to every year? 50, 100, 75 or 150? I can hear it ticking. It's a bit like being in a countdown. Ah, you thought it was going to be the big number, didn't you? Because it was the biggest one, you thought, oh, they must do that. Hull City Council aspire to take 100 new apprentices every year. So any 12 months, any month within the year, we aspire to have 100 apprentices that are brand new to the service at any one time. The actual number is 105, but we aspire to take those 100. So we are one of the largest providers of apprenticeships in the local area. We've got 4,500 members of staff and within there we try and accommodate 100 apprentices at any one time. Do we always get to that number? Not always, because obviously it's supply and demand and sometimes we've got vacancies and people are not wanting those vacancies at that time. But we do aspire to take those 100 to make sure that they can get some really good training because that is our succession planning. The average age of a Hull City Council employee is my age and I'm dead old. So what we need to do is make sure that we've got you as aspiring apprentices coming through to Hull City Council to look at how you can develop your career. So I'm just thinking, what kind of careers could be in the Hull City Council? I'm going to pick on a few people if that's okay. ElatedDog, what could we do in Hull City Council? Teaching? Yeah, yeah, in education. Or we actually do a teaching apprenticeship where we teach vocational people with vocation how to become our trainers and our teachers. Harvey? Can you think of anything that Hull City Council might do for you? See, I always think of bin men. I don't know why, but because it says Hull City Council on the truck, doesn't it? So I always think of that. What about James? Which one's James? You, James? Do you think? Might have to shout at me. Engineers, yes. Because all the bridges in the city, I'm just going to use bridges as an example. So if you cross over any of the bridges, they're actually maintained by Hull City Council. So if you're an engineer, you work for Hull City Council. And also all the trucks, we call it fleet. If anybody needs to get them repaired, if they're a mechanical engineer, aren't they? What about you, Mer? Do you think? Teaching as well. Has anybody else got any ideas? Daniella? Right, okay. Yeah, yeah. So we've got law, we've got legal, we've got accountants, we've got neighbourhood and housing, so that looks after all your housing. You've got waste management, which isn't just driving a truck and emptying your bins. It's all that waste management that goes with it, recycling, all those things. We've got digital, because you can't run a council or any business without digital. That's a very big department. We've got our education department. So there's all those different departments in there just waiting for you to come in and say, right, okay then, I'm going to start here, I'm going to get that apprenticeship and then all those departments open up to you because you can apply for permanent posts. So it's about looking at what career that you might want and what career path that you might want to do. Shall we see who's top dog now? It might not be ElatedDog though. Let's have a look. Oh, it's still James and Mer, but everybody else is creeping up to you too. Next question, shall we go to? Another quiz question. What is the NTEST called of an apprenticeship? End Practice Assessment, Endpoint Assessment, Endpoint Exam or an Assessment of Skills? Sometimes it's worth a good guess, isn't it? Okay, so two of you, which two of you was that? Well done. Well, it was three of you because you're a team. Very well done. Yes, it is called an Endpoint Assessment. Did you know that because you knew it or was it just a good guess? It was a good guess. You, you're just a good guess. It is called an Endpoint Assessment. So what is an Endpoint Assessment? Why is it different to the rest of your apprenticeship? So you sign up for your apprenticeship and you get your delivery. So all this time here, you're being delivered to, all your theory and your working. You get to this, which is called a gateway. So you've got a gate post there. You've got to get all this done, anything else, any mandatory training like they're asking you for. Then when you get to this gate post, you cross over what's called a gateway. And in that gateway is your Endpoint Assessment. And that's awarded through an independent body of people. So a different awarding body comes in and says that all the work you've done is your work and it's up to standard. And then they sign it off. We don't as a training provider, that's what they do, to make sure that everything that we've delivered to you is at the right standard for you to progress on to your next stage or get that permanent position in the company as well. But yeah, well done. Shall we see who's winning? I think it might be James and Mer again, just because they got the question right. And it is. Yeah? You ready for the next question? They're very quiet, aren't they? You can shout out any questions at any time. No questions to ask a question if you don't know the answer. Yeah? So we're back on to the quiz. Engineering. We deliver engineering. Engineering Fitter, Metal Fabricator, Electrical Maintenance, Engineering Operative and Sandage Technician, Engineering Manufacturing Technician and all the others. Which ones do you think we deliver as Hull Training and Adult Education? Well done. Yes, we do. We deliver all of those to the seven that got the correct answer. So nobody was wrong, it's just that we do all of them. So all those different engineering trades, we actually deliver at our engineering centre, which is currently at Orchard Park, but we will be moving, not next year, the year after, to a new site. So, and they'll be coming with us to our new site. Engineering Manufacturing Technician is a Level 4 programme. Sandage and Engineering Fitter, Electrical, they're all Level 3. And Engineering Operative is a Level 2, which is equal to a GCSE. Level 3 is equal to your A levels and a Level 4 is equal to your foundation degree because it's your next step on. Shall we see who's winning? Oh, Harvey, well done. You must have been really quick. Yeah? Next question. What could be the duties, I'm going to hand this over to you in a minute, could a business administrator do? Organising events and meetings, sending out letters, answering the phone? Could they do these and more to run a business? So you're getting really quick at pressing them buttons, I'll tell you. Well done. Yes, I'm going to hand over to you because you delivered that side of it, not me.
We do deliver it, but I've experienced, I was an apprentice and I did my BA2 and BA3 Business Admin. I did all of those duties, organising events, I did staff conference, meetings, minutes of meetings, we did letters, emails, filing, answering the telephone, dealing with customers internal and external and there's many more duties.
Your apprenticeship led you on to other things as well, didn't it?
Yes, and I'm doing an apprenticeship now as well. Because I'm doing a learning mentor Level 3, so now I'm a mentor princess. So I've progressed.
So you've progressed on to that. So you've got your role, you've got a joint role at the minute, haven't you? You've got administrator and you're also in the engagement team as well. But then you're doing this learning and mentor apprenticeship to help future apprentices make sure that they're getting all the right advice and guidance as well. Let's see who's coming up top again. Still James and Mer. Still James and Mer. Okay, next question. True or false, is it true that Hull Training and Adult Education offer higher level apprenticeships? Well done. You're all listening obviously because I did say we do a Level 4, didn't I? The foundation at down at the engineering centre. We also offer Level 5, but that's in the vocational teach training apprenticeship as well. So we actually offer them to Level 5 in apprenticeships. We've not got to the next stage because what we do is we work with Hull University and they deliver the Levels 5, 6 and 7 for us as well. So we can refer people across to them. Well done. That might have made a difference. Let's see if James and Mer have been caught up. Oh, Harvey, back on a streak, well done. But James and Mer are still winning. Okay, next question. Quiz question. On a customer service apprenticeship, based in a shop, based in an office, travelling around the city, based in a call centre, what do you think you are as a customer service? Do you think you might be doing as a customer service apprenticeship? Yeah? A customer service does all those duties, but what we deliver is based in the office. So if we deliver different parts of a customer service apprenticeship, we could be delivering it for the call centre. But the one that we currently deliver is for the actual office. Have you got anything to add to that, Carol?
Well, customer service, I mean, that can cover any, any type of role within the council or external companies when you're dealing with customers. So that could be answering the telephone, giving people, you know, giving information. You could be working in a call centre. There's so many roles that you can actually do in customer service. That can be, you know, customer service friendship. Or it could just be where you're providing information for customers, you know, sending out information for customers. So it's really, really varied. It doesn't mean to say that you have to work in a shop or in a call centre. So it just covers a lot of office-based.
So what we're doing today could be classed as customer service because you're our customer possibly and we're giving you that information. Yeah? So it covers such a wide range of things that we can do. Let's see who's winning on this one. Oh, Harvey's still creeping up, but James and Mer have got three in a row now. So they're climbing back up there. Okay, let's go for the next one. Quiz. Hull Training and Adult Education, Construction, Fair, Quench, In, Joinery, Pottery, Painting and Bricklaying? Joinery, Bricklaying, Fenestration and Painting, Joinery, Bricklaying, Painting and Sewing? Or Joinery, Painting, Fenestration and Plastering? Which do you think that they might deliver at the construction centre as part of Hull Training? So so far we've done engineering, business administration and we've done construction because they're our three main deliverers, delivery. Well done. To those five who got it, joinery, bricklaying, fenestration and painting. Now I'm going to ask a question here. Who knows what fenestration is? Anybody have a guess what fenestration could be? Just shout it out. Don't need to put your hand up, just shout out. What could fenestration be? Anybody got any ideas? Say that again, sorry. Do you know somebody said that yesterday? And that's not a daft answer, is it? It's something that there's a lot of in this room. There's a lot of walls. What are in the walls? That you can see through? Windows? Fenestration is the word that means manufacturing or installing windows. So we could have put window installer or manufacturer on there, but actually we've got to use the right title. So otherwise you wouldn't know what, you know, you've got to learn the right title to know what you're applying for, don't you? So fenestration is actual window installation or manufacturing. So who's learnt something today? I have. We know what that word meant, didn't we? So yeah, so fenestration means windows installation or windows manufacturing. We also do the painting and decorating, bricklaying and the joinery as well. Let's see if those five that got it right made a difference to the score. Harvey, well done. Oh, he's pipping you now. Not by, oh, by, is that two, no, 22 points is that? Sorry teachers if I'm not doing my calculation right. Is that 22 points? Well done. But look at Charlie. Streak. That's what he's on, a streak. Right, next question. It's quiz question. A public services operational delivery officer within Hull City Council's offices, out on the streets, within a hospital or within the police force as a senior member of the team, what do you think a public services operational delivery officer where they might work? Well done. Yes. Do you want me to say what? Right. This public services operational delivery officer, we call it the ODO because it's too many words. We're too many words and we're a bit lazy. Bad time it gets doing this one. So the ODO is delivered within local authorities, but it can be delivered in the police as well, am I right? And the NHS. So anybody that does like a civil service or a public service, they can have the ODO delivered to them. And what it is, is it's a bit of a mixture of business and customer service. Right, aren't I? Yeah. So within the Hull City Council, a majority of the young people that go into there or older people, because anybody, any age can be an apprentice, they will maybe start on that operational delivery officer. Because what that is, is it's an apprenticeship that's a 2 stroke 3. So it's a combination of the two. So you end up coming out with a Level 3 at the end. But it is one of the most popular ones in Hull City Council departments because it crosses over the business administration and the customer service as well. Let's see what that difference has. Oh, James and Mer, coming back, coming back. Only takes one question, doesn't it? And you're back in the game. But Charlie, you've got six correct in a row. Well done. Quiz. Places you could work as a construction apprentice on a building site, in a factory, in a private home or all of the above? As a construction apprentice. Yeah, well done. Those that said all of the above. It's not to say that working on a building site is wrong. Because you can work on a building site, but it's all those areas. So if you're working in construction because of the areas of trade that it covers, because construction actually, although you think of electrical as engineering, electrical's also in construction as well. So anything maintaining a building, which is called facilities management, that is classed as construction and that could be an electrical maintenance engineer going in and maintaining this building. So it could be in this building, it could be in a private home because they're coming in and doing, you know, building homes, things like that. That's the construction industry. In a factory, they're actually maintaining the machinery as well as the building within the construction arena. And obviously all of the above, it could be more, could have put more on there. Let's see what that makes, changes the scores. That's third place. Second place, Harvey, well done. And first place? I think we know who it might be. We're, well done. Well done, boys. Really well done. I think he might have had an advantage there, but I'm not going to take that away for you. But really, really well done. So we've got a little bit of time now, maybe to do a little bit of Q and A for you to ask some questions. Now, I do apologise if I ask you more than once, but I do wear a hearing aid and sometimes these rooms aren't really good for me. So if I do say to you, what did you say, your teachers might have to shout it out to me as well. So has anybody got any questions? So has anybody got any questions for us as a team who deliver apprenticeships? Is anybody thinking about doing an apprenticeship, by the way? Anybody thought about doing an apprenticeship? Anybody know what they might want to do? You're all year elevens, is that right? Tens. You're tens. So have you not thought about what you might want to do later? No? The beauty of an apprenticeship is, I love apprenticeships. I did one when I left school. So the beauty of them is you're earning while you're learning. So and now because of the reforms that happened four years ago in apprenticeships, what they're saying that you can be any age and you can be an apprentice. So even if you decided that you wanted to go, say, do your A levels, then go and get a job. What you could always do is while you're working then is say to your boss at the time and say, actually, I'd like to carry on with my training. And then what your employer would say is, well, what is it that you're looking at? And if it's an apprenticeship, they actually pay for the training. So you're earning while you're learning, even when you're employed. So it doesn't have to be anybody new. It could be existing. So if your parents are looking at training and things, I'd be worth saying to your parents, have you thought of an apprenticeship? Because then the employer's paying for that training rather than paying it for themselves if they have to. Some employers pay for it for you anyway. But it's worth looking at what that apprenticeship looks like. And because the apprenticeships cover such a wide range from the level two right up to that degree level, it's a different offer, isn't it? Apprenticeship degrees are really, really hard to do because you've not just got your degree to do, you've got to do the apprenticeship that sits behind it and all that portfolio work and making sure that, you've got to do that end point assessment as well. You got anything else that you would like to add?
It is just something worth thinking about, obviously, because obviously when you, next year we're doing your exams, start looking at all the colleges and start thinking about apprenticeships. All of the apprenticeships, when employers come to us with a vacancy, we put it on Find an Apprenticeship website. So you might want to start having a look at that and see what vacancies are on there because you can go onto that, apply and then you'll come to somebody like us or it could be another provider that's dealing with that vacancy. You can apply for it that way. And you'll come in to see us to do our application process and then we push forward to the employer. But obviously, like Cheryl said, there are so many different types of apprenticeships that you can do. All you need to do is put sort of like a word in for what you're looking for. And so if it was administration, you could put admin or administration or business or customer and it'll bring everything up. So, you know, maybe start having a look at that over the next year just to see what's out there really.
And it's a good idea to do that as well because I look after Hull City Council's apprenticeships. So it doesn't matter whether you're starting brand new or you're an existing member of staff. So obviously I've shown you what we actually deliver. But when the departments come to me, then I have to outsource it to other, what we call external providers and outsource it for them. So then I've got to start my searches. So it'd be interesting for you to see what is the offer and what kind of jobs are out there and in which areas. Because what you will find is some apprenticeships in, some specific apprenticeships only offered in certain parts of the country because they've got specialist providers to deliver that. So if you wanted to do something extremely specialist, it might not be offered in Hull. So you've got to be aware of that. And that's one of those reality checks that if you want to do the training, you may have to travel somewhere else and live somewhere else to do it, like you would if you was going to university. Yeah. So it's no different to that.